Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You are watching Fact TV presentation of the Town of Athens Select Board Meeting.
All right, we will call a meeting to order. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have one, so just for my malpractice insurance as an attorney, I just have to have the board, I have to read it and sign this form in order to say that I don't provide legal services for the town. And it's just for my malpractice insurance.
So we can take that up under Boards and Officials?
Sure, or mail, whatever works for you.
Boards and Officials. All right, minutes from our prior meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.
Public comments? Public comments?
No.
Don?
No.
Public comments? No?
No.
You were here for later.
No public comments?
I got two things.
All right.
One thing is, I want to know if you've talked into a road foreman about the loss in front of my house? And why it hasn't been fixed, it's been four months now. And the other reason I'm here is I'd like to know how come they go by my house with a leaf blower? And blow leaves up on my porch? All across my lawn? On some of the grides, over top of my generator? Not once, but now twice. He did it again today. Stole rocks all over the place and everything else. There's no need to do that. They stole rocks and leaves and everything right up on my neighbor's garage roof across the road. And what's going to be coming this, David? You know, this is, you know, you guys say there's five of you up there, and you say you talked to him. You talked to him last week, and I'll be goddamned if he didn't do it again today.
Did you talk to him after our conversation?
Yes.
Because it just appears to me...
He's got no respect for any one of you guys up there. And he's got no respect for anybody who owns property in the Town of Athens. Nothing. And then, not only that, as I drive my own truck around doing my job that I do, I've seen that truck four different times this week while since the last Slapman meeting in three different towns. One of them was 22 miles away. What's being done about that? And the other thing I need, I need to major mention the dog on the truck so I can get the sign done. And it's just, this is just, you know, it's been going on like this for two years. My stolen law, I asked to get a price to get that fixed. So it's a year and a half, two years ago, I haven't heard a thing. Now, right now, I request the Town of Athens hire somebody to come and suck the leaves off my lawn, off my porch, and out of our carpet. You guys have done it twice now, and it's enough. I've had enough of it. And I want that, what in the minute. That's my request, and I want it done.
So did you talk to him?
Yes.
And he blatantly did it again. So, I mean, that's just no respect for this board. Because it's like every month, issues are being brought to you guys. You're his boss. If I did that where I work, I'd be walked out the door. And he doesn't respect the landowners, the taxpayers that pay his wages. It's just inconsiderate. You don't have to destroy people's property. You know, it's just, it just seems to be escalating and escalating.
But then he'd go fly, then he'd go fly, get waved, and smile at you.
And then that covert down there that continues to wash because it's crushed or whatever, that never gets addressed. And that would stop that washing all along that road there. And that's been brought up more than once. Someday, somebody is going to go in that ditch, like what happened before, and land it in my tree. Or worse, they may get hurt themselves and not be able to drive away.
You know, I'm 72 years old. I go out and drive, we kind of like doing it. And then you come home and see that.
And I mean, we know, we're not the only ones that have complained.
Right up top of the hill, off the porters, he's got the leaves blowed up right up to the top of the beak fence. Why is he doing that in front of people's houses? I can see doing it other places. Because it does help when it rains and the water's dry. No, I guess.
Now, maybe the town should have thought about buying a, instead of a blower, something to vacuum them.
Is there an angle it differently so it doesn't go that far to the houses? I don't know.
He turns down the blower when he went past their house this time.
Well, it's funny that I could see rocks and dust and dirt blowing over.
Blow the leaves away, then they'd be accusing them of not removing them out of things so they would keep ours.
We never ever complained about that because they never had a leaf blower in the past. And we used to always rake the leaves ourselves along that road.
David, I did that, I did that to Tina and Lily. They just raked everything down front, had everything all cleaned up. Go out and look at that now. It looks like we've never done it again.
Okay.
And you can make all the excuses Janet, you want for it. But you know it ain't right.
Let's, let's address the board here, let's not go back and forth. Linda, you have anything more?
No.
All right. BDCC.
Welcome back to me. Hello, I'm Rachel Shields Ebersol. I work with BDCC, the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, which is a terrible name that we're working on. But, so Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation is the regional economic development agency. So the state of Vermont designates, there's 12 of them throughout the state. And we are, we receive a small amount of funds from the state of Vermont to do economic development work for the whole Windham region. And then we find, go out and get grants for the rest of it. And then we have a sister organization, which you all are probably familiar with, but just for everybody else and to refresh your memory, called SEVeds, the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies Organization. After Irene, we really saw a need for more holistic economic development, not just like business lending, but, you know, trying to make sure that people can, can find housing, that young families can live in small towns like Athens, so they can go to the schools here so the schools don't have to close. Really just kind of addressing those bigger issues that affect economic development and community privacy. So SEVeds is an organization with its own board that kind of does bigger picture regional thinking. And they don't have any staff, so they contract with BDCC to do this sort of bigger picture work. So we are coming to date, we ask every town in the Windham region to help us with this work, funding us at $3 a person. And so that's the request today is to consider having us on your upcoming budget for the town to vote on. And that has been included as a separate article previously. I know the budget has been really challenging, and certainly understand if that amount needs to be lowered. We, we really appreciate anything you're able to contribute. It really helps us to be able to show that all the towns in the region support the work that we do. So some of the stuff we've been doing, just today, we had a reality fair at Leland and Gray. So I don't know if there's any high school students from Athens, they would go to Bellows Falls, I think.
I went to Leland and Gray, we have school choice.
Yeah, okay, so, but there were Leland and Gray and Bellows Falls and Brattleboro students. Today, we, we really want to make sure that everybody in Vermont, in our Windham region graduates with a plan and can stay in Vermont if they want to, with a career that really helps them thrive and have a good life. So the reality fair is like, here's a bunch of different kinds of jobs you can have. We randomly assign them to you and see if you can, you know, find housing and buy a phone and have clothing and whatever on this budget. So that's a way that we work with the high school students. I also have worked with Dawn and Hannah a little bit. I'm fairly new to BDCC. I just joined in April. But I think it's been over five years, right, that you all have been really hoping to move the community center project and the town garage projects forward. And BDCC has, has tried to help move those projects forward as we can. But honestly, what we're doing in the background is we see that towns like Athens, you have Hannah who's amazing, you have Dawn who's so dedicated, you have you all who are really putting in a lot of time. But asking you all to conceive of and find a funding for and manage a big project, like a renovation of a town building, is just, that's really a big lift. And we see that, and we're really trying to advocate with the state to get more resources, more people, more capacity, more funding, so that you all can have what you need in your town, like a community center, like a town garage that's really, you know, functional. And that it's just not reasonable to expect that the 380 people in Athens are able to do that on their own. So just know that in the background, we're really working to try to advocate for that. I think Hannah sent you all kind of a sheet with a summary of a lot of the programs we do. We do a lot of different things, so I'm happy to speak to any of those if anybody's curious, but those are some highlights.
One correction I'd offer is Rachel's done more than just a little for Athens. Our help with grants stepped up quite a bit since you came on board.
Oh, thanks, Don. I'm, I'm sorry it hasn't resulted in more things, but no.
The wheels turn slowly.
Well, it's resulting in architectural scoping phase, which is important. As far as we've gotten so far.
All right.
I do not have questions at this time.
No.
I guess I have one just about something that you mentioned. So what is your organization doing to help local students or like people stay in Vermont? As you know, the brain drains are really, is probably one of the most economic challenges facing Vermont long term. So I'm just interested, like, interested what you all are doing to help, you know, like Athens kids.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a lot of different inputs that really result in that. So I'd say most directly, it's the Pipelines and Pathways Program that does this reality fair. But we have a, a staff person that goes into schools throughout the region almost every day to really help students think about their future, come up with plans, find out more about ways that they could stay in Vermont, but still have a sustainable career. And we're also working on a really cool app, which I know apps are new and shiny, but I really think it's, it will help. It's an AI-powered career assessment tool. So it's geared towards high school students, young adults, and new Vermonters, especially new Americans, to think about the skills and interests they have and match them with local opportunities for training. That's great, thank you.
So is this an app that you're developing, or is it an app that you are...
Well, it was developed in the Netherlands, and so it's very good for a European audience. So what we're doing is working with that company to adapt it to and fill up the data with all the stuff that's relevant to our kids.
And when will that be up and running?
Soon, I hope. I'd say within the year. It's, it's, we're piloting it now, so very soon. Thank you.
Rachel, do you, will BDCC be sending like a request letter to have, you're asking for some, a contribution in the budget. Last year, you sent a request letter for a voted article. And which are kind of two separate things, so...
I think we did that already, or was it, was that not the... We did send a letter.
Okay, asking for an allocation.
Yeah, so $3 a person at 380 people.
Okay, I'll have to find that.
Yeah, but will you let me know if it's not exactly the right thing that you need? Because we can certainly send you whatever you... Yeah.
Just want to make sure that we've got, that we've got it in, in the agenda for the meeting.
All right, thank you. Boards and officials. You want us to...
Yeah, so as you all probably know, I'm an attorney, and as an attorney, you have to carry certain kinds of insurances. And so my insurance company for my work has just asked me to read this letter into the record and then just get it signed if the, if the board agrees. So I just, I just have to read this for just insurance purposes. Dear Town of Athens Select Board, I'm honored and pleased to serve on the Select Board for the Town of Athens, Vermont. As you know, I'm a lawyer practicing with Perkins Coie LLP, the law firm. The firm encourages its lawyers to be active in the community, and this may include serving on boards. However, it is important to our insurance carrier and to the firm that we clearly distinguish between our personal services board members and the firm's provision of legal services. Accordingly, as a member of the board, I'm acting solely in my individual capacity and not as representative of the firm. In particular, I'm not acting as a lawyer or providing legal services to the board or the Town of Athens. And any communication between the board, its members, and the Town of Athens in me is not protected by the attorney-client privilege. If I receive compensation in connection with my service, this will be my personal property, and the firm will receive no financial benefit. If the board or their Town of Athens desires the firm to provide legal services, such an engagement would be subject to the firm's normal rules and procedures, which require confirming that this would not create a conflict of interest, signing an engagement letter, and designating a responsible firm lawyer. Please sign and return the enclosed copy of this letter indicating the board's agreement to my service as a board member consistent with the foregoing limitations. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Krista, do you need the whole, every member to say?
No, just the chair. I don't know if you want to make a copy of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hannah, treasurer's report?
Yes. There's not a lot to comment on, on the balance sheets, all of the fund allocations that they made. So if you look at this, you'll see the proper amounts in each fund. The budget is tracking pretty high, which I think is due to the emergency roadwork and some other work that we probably haven't gotten grant reimbursements for yet. So I'm just, if you go back to the last page, you'll see that the overall expenditures are 110% of the whole year now, and we're just at the beginning of the fourth quarter.
Can I just ask a quick question? When you do get that grant reimbursement, does it go back to the line items it came from, or does it go...
It depends how things have been budgeted for, and if they've been budgeted for. So we don't have, I mean, as someone who's on the budget committee, like, you know, we, we don't always know what roadwork is going to happen, so it's hard to budget for something. So there's a few different ways it happens. There's, like, the stormwater program is something we know that we work on. So I tend to put those expenses for stormwater-related stuff in there. When the grants come in, I just put it under state grants. And so the two line items balance each other. It's not coming in and out of the same line item. And then there's also like a grant reimbursable expense line item under roadworks. And then there's a emergency roadwork line item. So those three are, those three are where most of the unbudgeted expenses end up.
If we have stockpile, let's say, of gravel and stone that we need to use for an emergency that we get reimbursed for our grant or something, does that money then go back so that we can replenish that stockpile that we used? Or no?
It didn't last long.
I think it's a misunderstanding about how budgeting works. And so if, I mean, the select board can rate, you know, when we're budgeting for next year, let's budget to buy more gravel if we need to restockpile gravel. I mean, it's like money doesn't go into line items. Money goes into the bank. And then the money is in the bank and can be used by things.
But it should be associated against that. If we, if we have spent $1,000 to gravel to resurface some road or something, and we have a flood, and we have to put that $1,000 worth of gravel in there, and then FEMA gives us the 90%, we should be able to then...
Put that money back into that account.
Repurchase that $1,000 worth of gravel for the project that we had planned it for.
Well, you can certainly do that.
Because state statute does say what comes out of highway money or highway department funding is supposed to go back into highway department funding, not back into the general fund.
I just, I think there's like a misunderstanding in how the accounting system works. So, and I mean, if we, if we want to work to, to change how if those things work, we can look into it for sure. When we get a big dump of grant money from FEMA, it comes in under a revenue line item called federal grant money. And, I mean, that's, that can be spent, how the board, you know, it usually just reimburses what's been spent already, and then you budget for what you want to buy next.
Well, just doesn't seem like it worked out that way last time.
We will, we will just have to be...
When we're budgeting, we're just about to go into the budgeting process now. Let's, let's budget for stockpiles that need to be replenished. And, and then, then that material will be purchased, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, but I don't think that we should have to budget for something that has to be replenished that we've already had, that we use for an emergency service, that we got money for back from a grant. I think when the money comes back from, that we receive for emergency services or had to use something, such as something from FEMA, we should be able to get that money and restockpile what we had. We shouldn't have to budget more money for that.
And I think we can, but we just have to be cognizant of it when the money comes back that we...
And not give it back to the taxpayers as a surplus. It's got to go back to the highway department where it came out of.
Well, it might mean creating like a separate fund, so that it gets held over year to year. And we can, we can certainly look at it. I think it would mean changing the accounting system.
Is Darlene going to continue on as an assistant town clerk? So if she is, are you going to make an adjustment? Because she's already way over what you had budgeted for this year.
So there's actually, she's been working both as assistant clerk and assistant treasurer. So you'll see the assistant treasurer line item doesn't have anything in it.
Right.
So I think she's probably, she's probably just about now used up the budget for the year. But it's not 247% because it's...
Then why didn't you take it out of the assistant treasurer part?
Because there's no way of separating the tasks that she does. I mean, she's just working here. There's no way of saying like, this 10 minutes, you're assistant clerk, and this 10 minutes, you're assistant treasurer, and now you're assistant clerk, and now you're assistant treasurer. We just do, everything is triage when you're working in this office Monday mornings. You think you're doing payroll, and then someone comes in and needs to look up a deed, and then you're back to payroll or doing banking or whatever. And we also didn't know if she was still going to be living in town. I think, and that was a consideration for assistant treasurer.
Does she have to be arrested for assistant treasurer?
I don't know how, if she doesn't for assistant clerk.
Don't believe so.
I don't think so either, but there was a question at the time when we decided, oh, we'll just keep them separate in case someone else gets asked to be assistant.
I know other towns that have, that appoint treasurers, they have lived in other towns.
Yeah. Treasurers or assistant treasurers.
Treasurers.
Treasurers, yeah.
I would think certainly.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
Assistant treasurer could be.
I'm not sure. But to answer the question, I think she's willing to continue being an assistant in the office, even when she moves. So I think, I mean, I'm happy to have her. If she's not here, I would have to work more. So, I mean, it, one way or the other, I think the hours will be needed.
Yes.
If it's her or me.
Maybe she could just do half the time in assistant treasurer and half the time in assistant clerk.
Yeah, I think it would almost be best if she just decided to split it so it showed that it was like half and half, even though you're not tracking minute by minute. Because it's a little disturbing to see that.
I think it would make more sense to just be assistant clerk and treasurer in one line item.
That would work more.
I, I mean, that would work as long as the person's the same person.
Well, I know, and that's why we kept it separate. Other things are the meeting house committee paid off the housing rehab fund loan. So that is reflected in the balance sheet. And then moving on from treasurer report to other things, Dead River came. They found no issue with the pipe on the oil tank. So there's a new inspection report that says there's nothing wrong, and they will start filling the tank. Darlene and I have managed to get through the safes open.
Wow.
Back here, the old safes.
Wow.
And, and there is stuff in them.
Like cool stuff?
Yeah.
Dead bodies.
Old, old stuff, old wallpapers.
Is it like luggage?
Yeah, it's what was in the inventories that I had, which is kind of nice to know. So I think the, the last one that we can't get open is probably has the stuff that's in the inventory for it as well. So I'm thinking for now not to have the locksmith come down and bust into the last one, because I am fairly certain it has, it has the stuff in it, and we have nowhere to put the stuff, so it doesn't make sense to try to get it open. I would like to work on the survey plaque storage and buy some sleeves from CO File using the money in the Record Preservation Fund. So we can use the cabinet that Grafton gave us that's built for housing survey plaques. And it'd be a lot easier, it would not fall on the floor every time you tried to take them out. I don't know if the board feels they need to vote to approve that, or...
Would, would we be able to take that from the listing fund too?
From what?
From the listing fund?
Listing fund, oh, from the reappraisal fund?
Reappraisal fund?
I don't know. I mean, I think the reappraisal fund specifically to reappraisals.
Well, for appraisal stuff, or like, you go to classes, you can go, and certainly the maps are for listing in the tax map.
I don't know if they'll cover things. That's, that's more office supply type of thing, and it really doesn't have to do with maintaining the grand list, which is what that fund is for.
Well, I mean, to maintain the list and to maintain the tax map.
And just remember, we're going to be going into a...
Reassessment.
Reassessment, and that's not going down, so. There's funds other places we should use those.
And the last thing is that we do, you have a design meeting with John Cicacchio's office next Thursday to look at the initial drawings for the town garage. And that's at 2:00 p.m. next Thursday, and I think Don will join, and Janet hopefully, and Matt. We'll take it here. I mean, I'll, I'll be here, and it'll be a Zoom meeting, so anyone who can join from here is welcome.
Okay, so I will make a motion that you be able to take out of the Records Preservation Fund survey maps container.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Oh, sorry, next, next time, next time, next one.
Well, Stephanie didn't like the idea. You don't like cabinets.
What are you talking about? What are you talking about, unlike cabinets? That's not true. I love a good cabinet. I don't know what you're talking about.
Don, anything for boards and officials?
No.
The meeting house, everything, reports and officials?
No, we just wanted to acknowledge that we had paid the loan back, and that you should have received a letter.
I haven't seen it.
Regarding that, and that's it.
Anything for listers or the, or the budget committee?
Listers, we're slowly working on getting through all the PDTRs that are coming in. And this is kind of our slow season right now, so we're trying not to put in very many hours. Because I know we've done a lot of training this year. So we're trying to not put in as many office hours so our budget doesn't go crazy. So that's where the listers stand. For the budget committee, we're going to start meeting on Tuesday at 7:00. Could we be put on the agenda for November 16th? Before the Slapman meeting to go over the budget as well?
Before the meeting, did you say?
The 16th, yeah.
So you wanted to start early, like 5, 6:30, 6, 16? So you wanted to start early, like five, uh, six thirty, six sixteen?
Probably should be five. And then, the only other thing I have to report is that Matt and I met with eight members of FEMA last Friday to go over the flood damage in the town. So I'm working with the district manager for this town, Mary, to go over all of our numbers and paperwork, and submitting everything to FEMA to be funded. So, we're working on that and moving along.
Thank you.
And that was, uh, it was a good meeting?
Yes, yes. There was a person there that was the site inspector, so he doesn't have to come back, and we don't have to meet with him. There is the mediation, mediation.
Litigation.
Yeah, person, which was really helpful on the landslide that we have. And we also looked at the bridge out back here, to see what we can do about that in the future and stuff. 'Cause Matt has noticed that some of the riprap has moved underneath the bridge from before. So we're looking into that and what FEMA can do to help us. Those are the two big projects, so.
And, and if I know that the reappraisal is always in the future, have we secured someone?
No, we have not. So, Si Bailey, our district manager, is supposed to be helping us with that. I haven't gotten any further with it yet.
I mean, a number of towns are getting repressed too, probably. All right, anybody else, boards and officials?
I do have that paper, David, but I think that would be executive session.
Okay. The L H M P and the brick grants.
I sent in the quarterly report today for the L H M P.
Okay. I forwarded an email to you, didn't I?
Yes.
What's that for?
Yep.
Did you get that too?
No, I did not.
No.
No, that was the first time I heard about it, was when you sent it to me. So I sent in the quarterly report to them, and hopefully I'll get some help.
Yeah, it'd be good to get that going and up and done, so.
I reached out to, I, I just was, I don't know if I forwarded this email to you all, but I reached out to Alyssa Savato. I reached out, 'cause I, I didn't know what the L A, the status of the L H M P was. And I was like, is this something we've worked with you on? And she just recommended to get, that we're, we're running out of time. For the, the window, the grant has to be used within like six months from now. You better get an R F P out if we're, if we wanna use the.
Do you know the amount of that grant?
It's about five thousand.
I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, 'cause I mean.
Never seen any paperwork for it at all.
I need to know the amount of the grant, so I can figure out the.
Well, if, if you contact the state, they will help you with the R F P. And they have, I don't know, remember the amount, but it's about five thousand. And then we'll just put out the R F P and, and, but Windham Regional won't be helping us with it, because they will probably be a bidder on it, on the R F P. So they're not gonna be helping us put that out.
David?
Yeah.
Could you just tell us what L H M P for the.
Local has mitigation plan, and it's a plan you have to redo every five years. And there's a grant that the town has for that. And you contract with, say, Windham Regional or some other organization or company that wants to help you write the grant, uh, not the grant, but the plan. And then that's submitted to the state, and then that's submitted to FEMA. And if they both approve it, then we have the plan for five years, and before you have to do it again.
And what's the brick?
What's the brick stand for?
I have no idea.
Seven.
Sandy's looking, I think.
Building resilient infrastructure and communities.
Yes.
It's a FEMA term.
Yeah, so it's all related to FEMA?
Yes.
Okay, what could that grant be used for?
Well, I mean, it, it, it's not, that's not necessarily a grant. It, if you apply for things that would mitigate problems, if you had something that was washing out, or like the bridge, and you come up with a plan to, that needs funding, you can then go and try and get funding through FEMA for things like that. All right, we're all set with that?
Tom, is this where we reapproached about having the hearing for the reclassification of those two roads?
Uh, we can.
So we can get that going?
We can do that under the policy review, probably.
Okay.
So we'll move to policy review. And we have the delinquent tax policy, the, uh, for the.
The sample.
The sample of.
It's just a timekeeping policy.
Timekeeping policy, and then about the roads. So do you wanna go with the roads right now?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have a hearing on those roads to have them reclassified.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do them separately there? And we will have a motion to, you're making a motion to.
Have a hearing on reclassifying.
Over hill roads, portions of.
Portions of over hill road.
What is that road classified now? Is that what they classify as the same?
I believe it's a class three.
Class three, all the way through.
All the way to the.
But it's not maintained as a class three.
So we really, for libel reasons, we should declassify.
Well, change the classifications.
I'll second that one.
We will have to get, um, figure out the, I actually wanna talk to an attorney about the hearings that we have to have, and the timeframes that we have to have those in.
Can't those be two separate hearings, or can we do everything at, even though it's two separate motions at one time?
I, I think we can do it at two separate, two separate times, so.
And Janet, what were you thinking about just classifying that as a trail that up there?
That part, yes.
Does anyone live there?
No.
Well, some people live on over hill, but not the part that pick those up the hill.
Reclassify, reclassify as a trail and then.
And we would have to contact Westminster?
We would have to get Westminster and probably Rockingham involved on.
For over hill?
For over hill. And I, I really think we're gonna have.
Connect with Rockingham?
Well, Rockingham comes up to it, I think, uh, at, at one point.
And who was that, who's on Westminster?
Well, Westminster, I, I'm not sure that any of the road is in Rockingham, but at least the town of Rockingham comes up to it. It meets the road. I, I believe we should probably get, have an attorney to help us and to guide us in the.
Did we do that when it was, was it the top part of San Far Road that was declassified?
It was, uh, went from a class four to a trail, I believe. I think we did. Uh, I know we, we had, but especially because it's two different town, and that was two different towns. That was Townsend and, and Athens. And then, I think that Rockingham had an attorney when they redid. I don't remember the name of their road was, but it was. It's sleepy, it's Sleepy Valley Road in Athens, but.
David, well, if you reclassify that road, the town of Athens collect no taxes off that road whatsoever. They maintain, collect no taxes on whatsoever.
So I think with that one as well, we would have to, uh.
Rockingham give up that by.
So who has it now, Grafton?
No, just I.
Just us.
We, uh. I, I still think we should probably talk to an attorney to guide us through it, because there is, there are a lot of times and, and things involved. That would be my suggestion.
Six hundred and fifty dollars left in the legal fees budget for the year and the new year.
That's one conversation and a few emails. I mean, honestly, it's less than I charge an hour, so.
Do you think the L T C would be able to help with what we would need to do that, reclassification?
Well, we could certainly, we could certainly look at that, to see what, what their opinion is.
And the road goes to Westminster, right?
Road goes through, through Athens and Westminster, yes. And I don't know what the classification of the Westminster end is.
I'm not sure what it is, but on the other side, it's Venus Hill Road.
It is, that section's a class three road. But once you get to the top of the hill, I don't know what, and they own, Westminster owns over.
Is if you do it wrong, and somebody raises something about it, it's gonna cost a lot more than a conversation. Why do these need to be reclassified this year and before the next budget?
Things be put off.
But like, what is, what is the reason for it to be done in the next six months? 'Cause we're not spending money to maintain it currently, correct? Are we?
If somebody gets hurt up there.
Well, that is true.
Somebody gets hurt up.
Yeah, but that's, that's what happens all the time. Like, why isn't it gonna be done in the next six months? You can put up dude on enter signs.
Well, you know, you can't.
Well, I just, it's just a lot of money, and I don't get why it has to be done this budget year.
You can get advice, and see how much it's gonna cost.
David, did you ever look at the maps that, that the town garage in the file on all the roads in Athens?
I've certainly seen the, the maps that were given to each year there. They don't do that any longer, but.
The maps over there go way back to when they put in Buxton Bridge area. And it talks about this road right here, it goes up through by car fletchers, and they used to go up through and come out somewhere up on the Walker Road. The maps are all up to that town road. I think if road over here, you'll find it's class four, from the byway up.
I think if you look at the, um, and class four is fine, although we would be responsible for the bridges and the culverts of there.
If that was a class three road, the state of Martin would have never let us put them over the cross there and keep people out from going up and dump here, dump.
That's, that.
See, I always thought it was class four.
I, I think, you know, I'll talk to the guy in Dumbarton.
That's why I was concerned about that.
I know the map shows it, but, uh, it's in places.
Well, the, the issue is, if it evens as the class four, we have to maintain the bridges and the culverts in the road. We don't have to maintain bridges and culverts in a trail.
I understand that, but the bridges aren't even there.
That's what I'm saying. So if, if somebody came to fix a bridge, we gotta put in bridges. And it wouldn't be, I know the first bridge, they would cut a hemlock tree and put it down and put plank over it. That wouldn't work. Cheap, I guess, but.
The map, the map here says nuts, which I think means not up to standard. But it doesn't have a, a class four, I think. Yeah, it's a four. I think it's an unknown. Do they just call it not up to standard?
But even at a four, we have to, the, uh, the bridges. And it hasn't been, um, travelable by a vehicle for. A great number of years.
I bet it's been over one.
That was one of that.
Oh, crap, roads actually, back this way, yeah.
So I would think if last, I, I would agree that we should probably certainly consider doing over hill road. But I, I really think we do need some assistance with it. We are volunteers.
And I understand that, but I would also like to take into consideration our budget and what we're still saying, perhaps we can wait until the next budget season. And I understand, you know, you're sort of playing the devil, devil's advocate there, but.
Well, I mean, we're not, we are probably, if we get assistance here, we're not going to be very far along two months from now, when we are in the new budget year. November and December.
How much money did you say was in the legal budget handle?
There's six hundred and fifty left. Out of, um, we budgeted five thousand, and we've spent four thousand three hundred and fifty.
Now, well. With a retainer, a retainer would be less than nine, unless we have an ongoing retainer with a law firm?
We don't have a retainer with any firm.
You don't know what he did stand for?
I think it was the same term Billy's, or.
It could be, I don't remember.
So what's the motion?
The motion is to consider over hill, reclassification of over hill. And I will second, did we have a second?
I did.
You did. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
If we're gonna go forward with it, um, which we just voted to do, I, I really think we need, you know.
I understand that, and I understand.
You have to, because if we, if you mess up something with this, it's gonna cost way more money to fix it, and it's, it's cheaper in the long run to talk to someone and get them to sort it out.
Yes. And if it, you know, if we wait until after the new year, that's fine too. Uh, to, um, you know, really get going, because we have to advertise and we have to.
I'm, I'm not against doing it, but I just don't think with what we have in the budget, it's a good time to do it. And I understand that it's legally necessary to get it done, so that we don't have any problems with it.
Well, let's start out with the L C T, and see what they have to say to us and recommendations. And we'll bring that back the next meeting, and then we will be one month away from the new budget year to be able to get over. Is it reasonable?
Yeah.
Will you look into it, Kim? And what's the other part of it, Karen?
The other part was to, uh, look into reclassifying Whitney Hill to a class four.
That just feels so wrong, and looks like a First Amendment claim, because you had people that came and complained about the road, or complained about how it was being done. And then, within temporal proximity, so at the next meeting, when there had been no talk about it at previous meetings, we moved to declassify it, which would be an adverse action. And so I think you can make a strong argument that we're retaliating against people and have a First Amendment claim. Also, this wasn't warned or put on the agenda. And so the people that lived there wouldn't even have the opportunity to come and talk about it. I know Candace is here, but this just looks so wrong. First meeting after they do work, we move to declassify it, because they were on. When it's up and talked about it, that is the lecture.
So seeing that Mill Road been. So seeing that Mill Road been acted on and complained about, but they haven't told that one up to?
I would not have heard of that, but, um, I, I'm, I'm, I mean, we have at least two houses, really three on Whitney Road. I'm not really looking to reclassify that at this point in time either. I understand that it would, uh, be expensive to work on it, to bring it up, uh, to full standards, but I, I think at this point.
So do you want to second it and we have to vote on it?
We can second it and vote on it for a while. Is there a second?
I'll second it, bro.
All right. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor of, uh, looking into reclassification of Whitney Road?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
No. You abstain?
I abstain.
It's Andy abstains.
How'd you vote Denise?
I said no.
She said. So it's only over hill that's, you know, that we're looking at.
You know, one of the things we need to do, um, as far as roads are concerned, is we have that little tiny piece of road up here before the V and the road. That little impassable thing and we should do something about getting that off of the DOT maps.
That's a class three road.
It's not a class three according to, yeah, no, it's a four.
There it is. Never been told up.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually a four. I know, you need a magnifying glass for it. It's a class four. I'm looking at the map right now for twenty twenty-two.
What's your state gonna say when you go down a nap, come, this is a class three road, they've been making your CD on all this time, you can't stop working? What are you gonna think then?
They have had it as a class four road. They have it as impassable. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed. And I have brought that up before.
Yes, we did last year.
Yeah, I mean, you can't even see really where the road was, never mind where it is. So why not get it done and over with and taken off the maps? Maybe talking about something that's point zero six miles long.
Where is the road Sandy?
It's called Smithville Drive and if you go up to this next house, it goes from there to the, uh, Route thirty-five.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, and, but when we moved here forty-some-odd years ago, you could actually see a dirt road. But over the years, I mean, they, they've had a horse pasture there, they've let it all grown in. Uh, the state considers it an impassable road, but it's still considered a class four and we should just take it off the map.
Makes sense. Would there have to be any drawbacks? Did we lose any funding or anything if we do that?
We lose a little funding maybe if it's a class three, which Sandy says it's class four, so we wouldn't.
It's a class four. And is that go through private property?
It does.
Yeah, it does.
Well.
But, you know, they.
I mean, it's, it's just like any road to, to, for the people own it and town owns the road.
I, I can't, I can't honestly say I've ever seen anybody use that road in all the years I've lived here. And you'd be hard pressed right now to go over there and find it. Well, yeah, David.
Wilderness backpack? Maybe in the daylight. I think if we put it on the agenda, that would make sense exploring.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Yeah, just, 'cause I don't know who's, you know, if anybody would have any thing that we're not thinking of, but it, from everything you're saying, it makes total sense. Like, why is it there?
Well, I know, I believe it's Fletcher's property.
No, it's not.
It's not, because is it yours?
Yes.
Ah, it's named its property.
Oh.
But then Fletcher's has their horse pasture right there too. Yeah, so.
Adjacent to it at least.
Uh huh.
So we can put it on a, uh, a, uh, future agenda. Now we wanna look at the delinquent tax policy. Hannah, do you wanna talk to us about that?
Yeah. Yeah, I wanted some clarification, um, on the part that says, I highlighted it on yours. So there's a part in the delinquent tax policy that says the delinquent tax collector will accept payment arrangement provided a signed agreement is entered into before October fifteenth. The payment plan must be sufficient to pay the balance before the next year's tax bills due. It doesn't say what happens if people don't have a payment agreement. Um, so I'm a little confused. I've been trying to get delinquent people onto a payment agreement. Some people do it and some don't. And, um, there's no consequences, so it doesn't, it's funny that this is in here with a date, but if people don't enter into a payment agreement, it doesn't say, well, they're liable for tax sale then. It says down a bit lower, um, after one year, the delinquent tax collector will hire an attorney to begin the following actions to conduct a tax sale. So I just want clarification if there's, if, if I should even be trying to get people onto a payment plan, there's, there's no way for me to push it in, in, in the year. I know other towns will put property up for tax sales sooner, like after three months. But, and I'm not, I'm not pushing to put land up for tax sale at all, but I'm just, I'm, I'm having a hard time following the policy and knowing what to do for people and telling them, well, what happens if they don't get on a payment plan? Does nothing happen, so there's no need to be on a payment plan.
Well, if they're not on a payment plan, or if they are and they don't pay, after one year it goes.
But if they're on a payment plan and they miss a payment, nothing happens. So there's kinda no reason to have a payment plan.
Maybe just for the homeowner's budgeting purposes, but, I mean, if the outcome is still the same, they, they missed a payment, it goes for tax sale, or they, they don't get on a plan, it goes for tax sale.
Do you want us to take that section out?
Um, I don't have, I don't have a specific, no, I mean, I think, I think payment plans are useful for people, but, um, I guess I get pushed, I get pushed back. I mean, I try to, I send out the payment plan sheet. I, you know, have a sheet that people have to fill stuff out on, but there's, and sign their name to it, but there's, there's nothing that happens if they don't do it. So I'm just wondering, is this a waste of energy and time for me?
So you need something in there that's going to be a clarification that if you don't sign up for a payment plan within three months will go, it'll go up for tax sale?
But here we say tax sales after one year.
I.
Yeah, I know, but, uh, I'm trying to get a gist of it.
This is the reference. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a gist of it.
The policy has a discrepancy.
So if you have a policy, if, if you say if you do not sign up for a payment plan, um, by October fifteenth, then by January fifteenth, we will start the process of putting your property up for tax sale if you miss a payment, you know, same thing type of deal?
I think something like that would be helpful, um. Yeah.
And maybe exclude, maybe exclude that whole one year thing. It starts at three months. You know, if, if you, if you don't sign up, if you can't make your payments, if you don't sign up, it's three months. Then if you miss a payment, that's an automatic into, or maybe if you miss a payment without notifying the town clerk, because there could be extenuating circum- circumstances. Yeah, delinquent tax collector.
Yeah, no, absolutely. There, there can be circumstances and we can adjust a payment plan and all of that and we, and I do that with people.
Yeah, so we need something like that and just get rid of that one year clause and s- lower it to like three months.
Yeah.
And then if you're gonna, if, if there's a possibility of missing a payment, you have to contact the delinquent tax collector and make arrangements.
But I would think you would want to do this in, in conjunction with the statutes and so to say that you're laying everything out, this is, this is your timeline, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. We have no other enforcement than to sell a property. That's the only enforcement to this policy that you want to do. So to make it all these, you do this, or if you don't do that, you're gonna do this. I, I think getting it too complicated is not helpful for anybody, for the person that, that hasn't paid and for the town. Uh, making it complicated by saying, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. And it's not like you say, wow, you, you know, we'll charge you extra if you can't, you will pay something else because you can't. The only thing, the only thing you have is the tax sale.
This is the same thing as if you're buying a car, you're putting a mortgage on your house, you sign a piece of paper that says if you miss a payment, this is what's gonna happen to you. If you miss more than one payment, you know, we, we possess the car or the bank puts a more, puts a lien on your property. So that's what we need to do is have some clarification, have a distinct timeline instead of this, October fifteenth. You know? And then further down saying, we give you a year.
Right. That's what, that's what's tricky.
Yeah, I, I mean.
And there are people who get on a, there, I mean, there's, there's a few people in town who just use the town as a bank. And, you know, pay, I'll, at the end of a year, I send them a tax sale warning and then they pay up. And, uh, I mean, I just think with the trouble we have with, you know, budgeting and getting, you know, having enough money to pay the bills, that it would be nice to have this a little tighter.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's understandable.
Well, why don't you come with some words that, that you want for the policy at the next meeting and we can, and look at that.
I'll look at other towns' policies and see if I can.
But I, I suspect it would be good not to have it too complicated, um, for either the town or the people.
Yes.
All right, the break comes, what, you, what do you call the policy?
Sample.
Sample?
Yeah. Um, so after last meeting, I just pulled together, I'm calling this a sample. This is not a proposed policy. This is just like basic language that's in one. Um, I'm thinking of this from the perspective of protecting the town from any potential wage and hour violations. So my first question, 'cause I don't know, um, is if the town's covered by the FLSA, 'cause as we are, there's just very hefty penalties related to record keeping where if anybody was to say that they, like, I actually worked this amount of time and like, you guys didn't pay me for it, or even worse, my supervisor or somebody told me to do work and just not record it since they're hourly. So all this does is it just says that in order for us to keep accurate time records and ensure that employees are paid for all hours work, they have to record their time, which would include clocking in and clocking out for start time, stop time, time away from work. That just means that there has to be some record of like, I was on vacation this week, like, the records just have to reflect time away from work. And then unpaid breaks, but we don't exactly have a break policy, so that's something we would have to come up with. You know, you get an hour paid lunch a day, um, just put it in there. And then the main thing that I think we should just highlight in here is um, we should have something in place for, we need to state in here that they are to record all time that they work. So, you know, if our town employees, mostly the people at garage, if they start work before they go to the town garage, that has to be recorded. If they go home or they leave the town garage and they're doing phone calls or doing meetings at the office, you know, like the FEMA meetings, which Matt was doing on behalf of the town, like, that has to be recorded. You're doing work, that has to be compensated. Um, and then just putting a clause in there that if anybody was to tell them, don't record this time, you know, like, let's say they were going to a meeting and somebody's like, oh, don't record this time, like, we need to have it in writing that they are still to record that time and they need to let someone know, I wasn't sure who, that they were asked to work time and not record it, 'cause we just don't want people telling, asking them to go to meetings or do things and then telling them not to record it. Another thing is currently our town employees, at least I've only seen the road crews, time records, they write down what they do. I don't know if that's required for grant keeping purposes, but, um, if it's not, I, if our concern, which my concern is, is just ensuring that the time records are accurate with punch in, punch, punch out time. I don't know why they need to record what they're doing. I know most, I don't know if that's required by grants, but if that's not required, it seems like it would just make more sense and be easier to just get, you know, like a punch in, punch out clock and just have them punch in and punch out or write it down, like, they don't need to.
It's usually only with the grants.
Okay.
When we do, um, the, the time.
And does it have to be on a timesheet or can that be kept in a journal?
Yeah, that's just the only thing, is it just seems like, that's just extra time that they're spending, like, why, I just, I don't see why they need to, need to just do a punch in, punch out unless it's required by grants.
Well, there are in-kind matching. There is in-kind matching on grants, so they definitely need to keep track of when they're working on activities that they're considering to be in-kind match.
But usually they make a record of that other than the timesheet.
Not that I'm aware of.
I've seen.
I have now.
No, we've had it on the timesheet. That's how, uh, when Matt and I were working with the FEMA, we were able to go back through the timesheets and, um, pull out all the times that they had spent doing the repair work on the roads.
Well, I've seen, I've seen where they also bill for like equipment and things. They kept a separate record for that.
I've never seen anything for that. I've got it seen on their timesheet.
So, you know, you use a grader or you use a backhoe for in-kind stuff.
Amber.
Um, I think the reasoning for them writing down what they do per day, every day on their timesheets helps for the maintenance of the roads and the scheduling of the maintenance that should be happening on roads throughout the year. So if somebody has a question on when's the last time you graded Walker Road or whatever, they can, we can go back and find that they graded on such, such date. Um, I think that's an important key for all of that. I know
But does that happen on a timesheet to be in a journal?
It's the best way to do it is on timesheets.
It's easier on the timesheet.
Other towns do the same.
You know, the timesheet's gonna be in the filing cabinet and you can look in by whatever month.
They use the one, I don't know how many loads is this, a lot, you go, yes. You have to keep track of it.
And also, and it, it's really handy too, that you can just take their timesheet, photocopy it and highlight that road and put it in your road, your road file and then the information is there when you're looking on a road.
Yeah, 'cause like a lot of times with FEMA, like with the machinery, they, it's good to know which machines they've used because FEMA's cost is different than ours. They have their own set of set costs. So if we know they used X amount of time on the grader, I can actually, I have it right on my computer right now. I can go right to the FEMA site and I can look up the size of the grader and what they consider the hours and the cost of it, so.
Makes sense. For the purpose of this sample, it was just trying to make it as basic as possible and just like, when you record, and then also making clear like, you need to, you are entitled to be paid and we are legally required to pay you for all work you do on behalf of the town. So like, if, if you are doing work, you know, not at the town garage, you go to a meeting or like you stop or maybe you go directly to the job site, like, that just has to be recorded. And also just putting in here that no one's allowed to tell you not to record your time or the work off the clock. So that was, um, my main concern was just creating a uniform policy, 'cause if anything was to ever happen, having the same exact start and stop sign every day, stop and start time every day, just, I'm just looking at this as like a, a liability, 'cause I get nervous that they're not getting, they're doing work that they're not being paid for. Like, because, you know, going to the meeting, talking to someone, if they're at home and they're fielding phone calls or getting stuff, like, they're doing work on behalf of the town and like, that has to be paid.
Yeah, I believe they do their work just during town hours, right? Not much after.
Not much after.
Right, but if they do, we are legally required to pay them and if somebody, you know, we hires, I'm not looking at this just for now, but like future employees, like, we don't wanna get in a situation where we're like, oh, we were told not to work that, you know, not record that time or, oh, I was doing stuff and I wasn't getting paid. So that's how I'm looking at it, just simplifying clock in, clock out and just covering us that no one's allowed to tell you to work off the clock. So, this is just a basic sample and the language and things is from the state of Vermont, like Human Resources, like their policy for state officials, just making it clear that this is just to ensure that they get paid for all the time that they work. So that's that. And then the other thing too that we would just wanna put in here is just define what a break it, I mean, the thing is, is Vermont doesn't require, like New York requires you to offer a lunchtime during specific windows. Vermont does not. And for the nature of our town employees' jobs, I don't think it makes any sense for us to dictate when they take breaks, but I think there should be something in writing that you get an hour paid or just something in here that just covers them, you know, like if they're having lunch and someone sees them sitting down and eating, like yes, they are entitled to an hour off-the-clock break at their leisure.
What are they working on right now, either?
Six thirty to two.
Six thirty to two?
So that's just the sample and of course, it's just a sample, so it's open to feedback. Again, those were just the bare bones.
Are we paying them for their lunch hour then or lunch break? Because six thirty to two is eight hours. And I know that like I have to work and a half an hour later, because I don't get paid proof, so it would be like six thirty to two thirty. So you're apparently paying them for their lunch hour.
And so putting.
Their lunch break and their regular breaks, if they take them, they're getting paid for it. And they don't take a lunch break.
Well, they should get time to, if they, you know, to sit down, eat, drink, you know.
It depends. If they're in the shop, then they sit down and eat. If they're out grading a road or doing something like that, they bring lunch with them.
Yeah. But I think it's just important just to have stuff like that in writing that, you know, you do get an hour compensated time to eat. And then of course, per class, OSHA, they also get reasonable time to, you know, go to the bathroom and do things.
Yeah, because we can't expect them to punch out if they have to run down here to go potty.
Right, no, and that's, so that's just, and so then the other thing too would just be because we should also define like what an unpaid break would be. Again, just having that in writing, like, so it's not necessarily leaving the town garage, but like you said, they may come here to go to the bathroom. So again, just having it in writing what we consider an unpaid break and we can workshop that. But again, just having like a uniform policy, so if people do have questions, we can, you know, explain that they're permitted or they're not permitted to do something within certain parameters.
Yep.
So, that's just a starting place.
Alright.
Do other towns, do you know if other towns around us have a timekeeping policy?
So, there's some other towns around us that they contract out work to do their road stuff. So they do not have one that is relative to our size. I can reach out to Grafton, but the towns with similar populations are contracting out of their work.
Yeah, like for London.
And then the other thing that's tough too is just recognizing the nature of our town employees where they deserve to have more autonomy in their work, so we're not dictating when they get a lunch break. We're not dictating, you know, we can't really dictate a lot of starting at times because it's very job-specific. So there may be a job that because of when an organization can meet and they have to be at different times, and so it's just.
Normally they're out plowing at night.
Yeah, so like that's the thing, right, is you can't be like, you're not allowed to plow a truck after.
Yeah, if there's an emergency and they're out there.
Yeah, and again, the most important thing for me is, say we are covered by the FLSA, there's just such significant penalties and we don't wanna be in a position where somebody was doing work on behalf of the town, like plowing or something, and then not recording that. They get mad at us, something happens, and then they're like, you owe us all these back wages. And we also wanna be able to be like, yeah, like they are entitled to take breaks, like they're entitled to do within this parameter. So it just makes things more clear.
On policies, I finished this one that we talked about, I believe it was two years ago, about standards for development in home driveways, access roads.
Do we have one for all?
I think so.
Anybody have any comments on this? Are we just gonna turn to a next meeting or something?
We'll go to a next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe you can fill it.
Well, I don't know. Well, that's the thing, is like I don't know what you all think is reasonable to like put for that stuff. So like, do we wanna do paid breaks? I have no problem with that. If so, like, how much? And then more importantly, what's considered, like when do you get into unpaid break territory? And so, and then more importantly, like, who are you supposed to report stuff to is also what I wasn't sure about. Like, do you report to the select board? Because what if the select board members ask me to work off the clock? Do you report, so you report to David? Okay.
Well, I mean, really, you don't have, the only, the only inherent thing that we can do is on a select board is.
Well, we need to make sure their time, as their employer, it is our responsibility to make sure that their time records are accurate, so.
Yeah, but as a.
Right, so that's the tough thing though, because we're like, we're also their employer, so we can't, we need to have some protection of like, we had a policy of what they were supposed to do if somebody told them to work off the clock and they didn't follow that.
No, I have to agree. I think they should get paid breaks and they should get paid lunch.
Yeah, totally. I don't, haven't, I have no problem with that. I think that's pretty standard.
That sort of makes up for the ones where they're out on the road at two o'clock in the morning.
Well, yeah, but you, I think it's just important that we just have it in writing that you get this amount of, you know, time off each day.
So this is really kind of the driveway policy for the road cuts for somebody coming into the road, right?
And for development.
Yeah.
Probably as a safety for us, that if we have this policy and, you know, adopt it, then it's there.
Now, do they need a permit to make a drive on with this?
I'm not sure. It's something that we could add to have a permit. I don't know if it would kind of piggyback the, the other policy we passed, I'm just seeing last year or the year before, on driveways.
We can make a copy for you if you want. Somebody can make a copy, I can't get out.
Make a copy?
I need a copy.
How many copies? One, two.
One, two.
Three, four.
Does that mention a side of the culvert and does it mention the soap coming into the main road?
I don't believe so, but I believe that other policy did.
Oh, actually, I need one.
So does the town supply the culvert or put the culvert in coming into a new access?
Should not, no.
Does not?
Should not.
Why did the town of Athens just put a brand new culvert in to cop the side driveway on the book I know?
Because they were putting culverts in across the road and they needed to have the water go that way to help with the water levels on the pond and for to help maintain the road. So it was in the best interests of the town to do it.
Oh, yeah. Anybody have any questions about this?
It's just my first time reading it.
Yeah, we're not gonna move it tonight.
I just wanted to bring it so that we could.
Makes sense.
Look it over and anybody, so we'll move on from this to, we can bring this back up with a little. Tax policy and the.
Timekeeping.
Timekeeping policy.
Also, before we move on with the timekeeping policy, I'm happy to fill stuff in, but I'm just, I have no opinion on this. I'm happy to do whatever works best for the board and people with more experience in this. Based upon what Amber and other people said, do you all want to continue where they handwrite them? Do you wanna punch clock? I hear the stuff about the grants making sense for the written one. The only potential hesitation that I have is with the, like the electronic stuff, that's just like a definite time and so it makes it a little bit more difficult for people to fudge times. So I just, I have no opinion. I'm open to whatever everyone else has to say about whether we'd wanna continue with them being in writing or use like a punch clock, but what you all think would be better. Does anyone have an opinion?
I would.
No, okay.
I think that it's reasonable to have it written down.
Okay.
I don't have a.
Okay.
I mean, because, you know, what if he gets called out and he's gotta go down that way before he comes to the shop?
Yeah.
You know, it's.
Makes sense. There had just been pushback about the writing before, so.
Yeah, but I mean, there are times that you wouldn't, you know, directly go to the shop. You have to go to the shop. Or go to the shop.
Yeah, right, right now without an emergency generator, if there was an emergency, they could not punch in and out either.
Right, I hear that. I was just trying to be sensitive to the concerns about writing.
I'm good with the writing.
I mean, I do know that there are ways to electronically punch in and out online without even having to go to the shop.
Yeah, because again, my only thing is I would just want the time to reflect the time that like they actually started working and currently on the timesheets, it's just blanket start and end times. It's like, that makes me nervous because there's times you're doing work beyond that. So.
Well, I mean, they should, if they're doing work beyond that or, you know, tied up, they should put that down too, you know, even though it.
Alright, so yeah, I can definitely keep it with writing and make it clear, you know, just having it written, that's the time that you actually start doing work for the town.
Yeah.
And the actual time to stop doing work for the town.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
Grafton has a personnel policy that's 27 pages long if you wanna read it.
Can you email that to me or have Morgan?
I just found it on their website.
Yeah, because the, well, the personnel policy includes more. It's not, that's their timekeeping. I believe that our, I actually believe that the town of Athens personnel policy is mirrored after.
Not after Grafton. Athens is the same thing as Grafton.
Not just, not exactly.
So it's on their website, she can look at it?
Yeah, because it was a personnel policy, not a timekeeping. So, okay. Thanks, Amber.
Executive session. Have a motion for that?
You have to say what it's for.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Because a premature public knowledge over a legal matter.
Yes.
One legal matter or two?
Two.
Two. Two legal matters. Is there a second?
A second.
Alright. All votes on table?
Aye.
And we will, National Flood Insurance Program.
So, I'm basically, I was, earlier I was at Stockbridge in Windsor. I drove like more than an hour, 20 minutes to get here. I know that I'm late, but I'm trying to visit the most select boards as possible. And we are doing media, we are doing everything to outreach the most people as possible, the survivors, that's how we call the people that is affected. And we are visiting all the towns on primary counties, because this is New Hampshire. It doesn't matter if the towns have damages or not, why we visit all the select boards, because the governor helped us to outreach the most people as possible, sharing the information through email, social media, websites. That's one of the purposes of me being here. That's very, very important for us. And you know that Vermont and the United States is a melting pot. I have seen this also in all disasters with hurricanes, tornadoes, floods in the south, in the north. We visit too many declarations, this is a presidential declaration, and the people that suffer damages, a lot of them move to different towns, cities, counties, and you might have people, you might have people here leaving from those counties that are more affected or people from here with families of other counties. That's why we visit all the primary counties. We even visit New Hampshire. Some people moved to New Hampshire. They are secondary counties. So that's why we visit primary counties, secondary counties. This is general information. I brought a paper for USDA. You all know that they have for public assistance, they have for business repairs too, for homeowners repairs. This is the fact sheet. That's very important. Two flyers for USDA. They are a very important federal agency. They are bigger than us. Of course, they receive more funds from the Congress, like FEMA, that they are huge, FEMA too. You all know that FEMA, they have funds for public assistance for homeowners renters. But we also, we always recommend the homeowners, renters, nonprofits and businesses to register first with FEMA. Of course, that's a general rule, but the exception is that the businesses can apply directly with the SBA. That's the exception. It's not like FEMA give funds to the businesses, but we need that registration number from FEMA for our application because you all know that the businesses are referred to the SBA from FEMA, but they need to register first with them.
Start with FEMA.
Ah, yeah, exactly. Start the procedures. Yeah, that's totally correct. The latest updates on the past weeks, this is the second station. The people can apply for physical damage with the SBA until the October 31st. And the same with FEMA, to register with FEMA is until October 31st and to apply with SBA, October 31st too. That's the second station. That means that this one might be the last one. So it's better to apply before than that, because sometimes we don't know, we don't know if we are going to have like grace periods. And if the people apply on grace periods, you'll know what that means, that they need to justify why they are applying late and it's not guaranteed that they are going to accept the application. Also, here I have flyers with the SBA for homeowners and businesses, renters, nonprofits. That 800 number is very important, because they can give the status of the application to the people, answer all the questions. They can give the people the updates of the centers, of the localization. You all know that it's so, they are constantly moving, changing the location, because that depends on the numbers of the visits. So right now, that's the best way to go. I know the one that is in Lululeah in Windsor, I know that does not that far from here, but it's better to call before going to the centers. The DRCs are from FEMA, but we were there too. If a person goes to a DRC disaster recovery center, they can apply with FEMA and SBA. And no duplication of benefits the same day on the same building. That's very important to know. We don't have any more business recovery centers. Those are from SB, with the SBA from SBA, so that people can apply only with the SBA on business recovery centers. We don't have any more business recovery centers on this declaration, but we are at the DRCs. So that's very helpful too. Also, I came, I visited these meetings, because I don't come here. Also, I I came, I visit these meetings, because I I I don't come here just to talk about general information updates. I always try to give more knowledge, because this information is not only important for the for these past events, but for possible future events. And if you all can learn just one thing today, that would be great, because that's on the benefit of the citizens constituents, not only for now, but for possible future events that we hope that, no, of course. So one of those examples examples to illustrate is how the people can take advantage of this, even though when you all know that they get discouraged with the SBA. We are not regular SBA. We are SBA, but the Division of Disaster Assistance. The people get discouraged, because you know, you know that FEMA is grant, free money. But some people don't like, when I say free money, because you know that that's from the taxes, like the money with, from the SBA, from the taxes too. How the people can use it? I always tell the survivors, complete the procedures with the SBA, because we were joining with FEMA, we are like a verification process, financial verification process. They really want to know, if you are denied by FEMA, they really want to know if you can pay it. If you can pay the loan. I don't like to say that word, because our programs, they have so much benefits that the name doesn't make the thing. So if you are denied by FEMA, most of the times FEMA refer the people, the people that is affected, to SBA. Of course, they get discouraged, because that's why we share the message. No fees to apply. They don't have to accept the those programs, nothing to lose. And if you are denied by SBA too, this example is for homeowners or renters, not for businesses. This example for homeowners or renters. SBA might refer them back to FEMA, and FEMA might give them all the other disaster assistance, like grants. I'm always saying might, because it's not guaranteed, it's not obligated, but at least that people can have hope to receive something if they complete the procedures with both federal agencies. So that's very helpful, important to note. Also, that denigration letter is very important. If a person tell you, ah, I am not qualified, I don't want that, hey, 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 complete the procedures. That denigration letter is important, because it's saying the grounds why of why you were denied. And some people attach that denigration letter to the application of FEMA, to appeal with FEMA. For example, if they receive 20,000, 10,000, 30,000, for some people, that's like, they say that that's like a drop in a bucket, because if you receive a lot, it's because you were like totally flawed. You lost out too much, possibly. And 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 the issue is that some people is not satisfied. Some people receive hundreds, thousands, or nothing, and they are not satisfied. So if you attach that, at least you can have hope that they can increase the amount that they gave you first. Of course, once again, it's not guaranteed, like like everything in the life, everything depends. Nothing is guaranteed in life. But one more benefit or ground or or possibility that the people have to use this in their benefit. Very important to know. The people that have insurance, another example, instead of waiting for that payment or settlement from the insurance companies that that can take months or year or more, and they are, their work is to try to find a justification or ground to not pay. So instead of waiting for that payment or settlement, because we have the one-year deferment with zero percent interest rates, the people might get the money faster and rebuild quicker and recover. That's the main purpose of all these programs from the SBA, long-term recovery, and rebuild quicker. Long-term recovery, why? Because these are more affordable ways. You can choose thirty years. Of course, if you don't take like a lot of thousands, I have seen payments of $20 a month or less. That that's in comparison with normal finance institutions. I don't want to mention the names. You all know that the word that starts with B, you know what I mean? Those institutions, it's not that easy with them, you know. You pay or you pay with them. It's not like you lost your profits or you lost your job. You can tell them, hey, I can pay this month, or the, we all, the interest rates are fixed too. So it's like too much benefits. You can request forbearances, deferments, and you have, once again, within that year, the people can apply for different federal agencies, nonprofits. The people is applying for the application of the state. With those funds, they can pay for the loan that that they took within that year, because the interest rate don't increase and they don't have to pay anything during that year. So we always, always tell the people, we know that we are not the best option, but that's what we have. We are an alternative, an option, not the best one, but but for some people, we are the only option and best option, because the reality is why we exist? Because if FEMA give you funds, but are not enough, if FEMA denies you, what are you going to do? To apply with the other institutions or to apply with the SBA? That that's, and that's the issue. You all know that the government can give everything to everybody. It's like in Montpelier, very city, that those cities and towns in Washington County that are so affected. It's like, to illustrate, in a business, if the business is there, it's like 200,000, 300,000 damages on inventory. Imagine if the if the government, the federal government give like 100, 200,000, 300,000 to each person. That's not possible, because this is not the only presidential declaration right now. It's like we have in Florida, in different states, at the same time, they have to divide all that money from the Congress. That's that's the issue. And there is, I don't know, I mentioned the incident period? The incident period is between July 7th and July 21st. So if a person suffered damages before July 7th or after July 21st, they don't qualify for this presidential declaration. That was FEMA and the state established that weeks ago, and it's the same for FEMA and SBA. It's within that, within those dates. And all these programs are not to improve. It's not like to buy a machine to have better sales, better sales on businesses or to improve the houses, to have better kitchens. Always is to return to what you were. Everything is related to the damages of the floods of July. Nothing, these funds are not for any other thing. That's also very important to know.
So is it from that entire period, from the 7th to the 21st?
Exactly. Yeah, because some something happened after like the, on Addison County. The damages that happened there, that's another declaration. That's another information. But all this information is very important for you all, because for possible future events, all this information is almost the same. What is going to change? Location of the centers, interest rates. For example, right now, they are they are as low as 2.37%, very, very low, of course. Depends on on the state, on the survivor, if it's a business, nonprofit, homeowner, or renter, and depend on the credit score too. These programs are different, because they're backwards. That's why we don't compete with the banks. We don't compete with them. And they even refer their friends, neighbors, or clients to SBA. Why? Because the higher your credit score, the higher the interest rate are gonna be, backwards. Why? Because the intention of these programs is for the people in need. So that that's what's behind of this. But that doesn't mean that a person with a good credit score can have a good interest rate with us or a better interest rate than with a normal, normal financial institution. So that's very, very helpful and important to know. One last thing, I know that the agenda was tight and I talked too much. The SBDC, Small Business Development Center, what that means, that's our research partner. The state give them funds and SBA too, so they work for both. They have business advisors. I know that in Vermont, like, it's more, not too many, not too many businesses in East Town, I know that. But even though if we can help one of your friends, family, and working on any other city, town, or county on Vermont, that would be great. Or just with, to learn one thing today, that would be great too, we do our job. They have business advisors, so they know about business plans, marketing, they know about the USDA, SBA, FEMA. They are helping the people with the application with the state. So they are so valuable, and here is the link, the SBA that got local assistance. So that's for all the United States. What that means, that the people can find their research partners, like for veterans, for women. This is related to businesses. This is specifically related to businesses. And they can find, the most important thing, they can find the closest center. And they can find that on Vermont or again, any other state, and they are a good resource. Here is a flyer for how to prepare for a disaster for businesses. Yeah, on the first page is for procedures and some more data information. So yeah, I don't want to bother you all with anything more. If you have any questions, it would be great to answer. So you all have my business card if you have any other question.
Thank you, and your email and phone number right on there, so.
Yeah, everything is there.
Alright.
Thank you so much for your time and opportunity.
I've never seen anyone so enthusiastic about insurance. Thanks so much.
Yes, thanks for that. Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Be safe.
Alright. So we are in executive session here shortly.